House Bill 110 is trying to pass this legislation to stop cities from having their own health department. And so we've been asked to pass a resolution saying that we strongly oppose that effort, that we really do need our health department. And I'm going to attest as a healthcare worker, what an asset this city's health department has been. When I came on council nine years ago, I was a little skeptical about how efficient things ran in that department as a nurse. And so I've been watching it over the nine years. And I am going to tell you that it is doing excellent work now. It is very efficient. It is very up to date. It is a great asset for a lot of people in this, in this city. When it was just a county health department, there were a lot of young families who had no access transportation wise to get to the county, to get some of these injections, to get, you know, a lot of the services that our health department gives. And then the pandemic came. And the way they ran their vaccine clinics, their testing clinics, I couldn't tell you a better way to do it. They, they just did an excellent, excellent job. And they were very efficient, very thorough, and they safeguarded the public very well. And when I had patients who had COVID, and we had to do quarantining and isolation, they were a wonderful resource and really stepped up and helped us. Otherwise, we'd have had probably a whole lot more cases here in the city of Salem. So that's what I have to say about this. I am really recommending that we send this on to council to be passed.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
It almost seems counterintuitive that they're doing this. I mean, in light of the pandemic, and like the comments you made, I would think you'd want local boots on the ground people, you know, for situations like this. What's the driving factor behind trying to scale it up, I guess? Is there a cost savings in their mind, or?
Andrew, Madam Chairman, can I speak?
Certainly.
The, the true driving force behind it is unknown. At this point, it's just one, one representative amending part of the, part of the budget, which he inserted this, this effort. Initially, it was to close within 24 months. It didn't give us any options. But, but Tim Ginter here locally amended that amendment, and it changed so that within 18 months, we would have to do an efficiency and effectiveness report. And then it had to be evaluated by the Health Commissioner at the state of Ohio as to whether or not our particular health district could stay in, could stay in operation. But we, we object to that whole operation because we don't know what the driving force is behind, behind this. There are only 113 health districts in the state of Ohio. And 88 of them are county health districts. So there's only 25 city health districts in the whole state. And there's over 700 cities. So to weed out, to try and weed out just 25 individual city health districts that are performing on a, on what Cindy described for us, I'm sure all the health districts are performing quite well through this pandemic. If I's logic, I don't see the reason why it, why they're, why they're, why they're going forward with this, or why it was even proposed. I do have Alana Stainbrook attending the meeting. She's our health commissioner. And I've been following along with this with Alana and the rest of the board. As mayor, I am the chairman of the Board of Health Districts, so I get information all the time about what's going on. But Alana, would you like to, would you like to comment to the council?
I came in a little late, so I didn't actually get to hear the resolution. However, you know, this was really a slap in the face for the city health departments. After all the things that we have accomplished throughout the COVID pandemic. And for this to come up at this time, when the pandemic's not even over yet, we were very surprised. It took us all by surprise. It is not the criteria that they're going to be setting up for us, or the study, so they call it, is going to be a criteria that we have to prove that it is efficient and effective for us to merge with the county. So what we, what we really want to do is prove that it's not. So you really have to watch the language that they use. Judy Cecilia has written her testimony. She won't be going down tomorrow, but she will be submitting it in the morning with the talking points, since she was instrumental in bringing the health department back in 2009. Also, Wes Vins, who is the Commissioner for Columbiana County, has spoke with Mike Rulie, Senator Rulie, in regards to how it is going to affect the county. And he is definitely not in favor of it. His recommendation to me was for us to more or less pound that senator's office and letting them know our opposition, and why we are effective and efficient on our own grounds. We do not need to merge with the council, with the Columbiana County, in order to be effective and efficient. The access of, the access to care, care is going to be, I don't know what the word I want to use is, but it's really going to be effective, because the people in our town can walk to our health department. Our Guatemalan population will not be able to get to Lisbon. They don't have the transportation to do that. Therefore, that's going to affect the vaccines and the communicable disease. So, and Judy has touched on all of that in her talking points, going to the Senate tomorrow. I plan on speaking with Senator, well, I'm calling Senator Rulie's office on Friday, and then we'll proceed next week in contacting him to let him know where we stand on this. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Elena, can you tell us which senator we should talk to as far as?
Senator Michael.
No, the one that's pushing it.
Oh, that came out of the House of Representatives.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know who's pushing it in the Senate. I know who pushed it in the House, but since it's already passed the House, I've not been told who's pushing it in the Senate.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think that this is not anything new. I think they've been trying to do this all along, when they said we had to get accredited, which was very expensive, very labor intensive. And you guys did, you did it. I think they thought they could starve us out at that time.
Well, when we applied for our accreditation, there was a whole section where it stated their recommendation was for us to merge with Columbiana County at that time. We are not yet accredited. We are in the process of, we've already uploaded five to 600 documents. They went through them. They opened 27 documents back up, which is really good, considering the number that we had to upload. And Lindley Hayes and I are in the process of going back through those for resubmission. Once we resubmit, they'll come, we will have a virtual site visit, and it'll go from there. So I'm really looking at 2021 of having a much better idea of where we stand in accreditation. But we're much further along than most of the city health departments. And actually, right now, out of the 118 health departments, or the 113 health departments that there are, only 44 are accredited.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that accreditation isn't something that we lacked for nine years. This, this process of becoming accredited is something new. It started a couple of years ago, and all the health departments in the, in the state had to go through the process. Again, I wanted to mention that. And Alana, I'm glad you had the figures, because of the 113, as she said, only 44 have achieved that accreditation. I don't know what would happen if a county health department already in existence couldn't achieve accreditation. According to the state, they would have to stop operating. That would be interesting. But Alana was the driving force in, in our accreditation effort. She was our health nurse, but she really took to getting all of the information together that we needed to, again, these 600 pages of information that we've, we've compiled. What a waste of time and effort and money if they, if they come out with this thing now, where we're going to be merged into the county. Again, Andrew, you asked what the driving force is, and I have no clue. I have no idea.
Cindy, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Mayor, does each district cover more than one city? Because that doesn't sound like a 113 districts for the.
A city, all, all counties in Ohio, there's 88 of them have a county health district. And those, those county health districts cover all cities in their county that don't already have an individual city health district.
So we have a county health district, and we have our own city health district. Also, not every does that?
That's correct. And East Liverpool has their own health district. And a place like Alliance does, and Youngstown does. New Philadelphia has a health district. There's, there's 25 cities that remain in Ohio that have their own health district. So we basically take care of everyone in the city of Salem, although during the pandemic, we've been giving the vaccine to anybody that comes. You don't have to be from Salem to get the vaccine in Salem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Can I ask a couple of questions as well?
Okay, but we have to hurry. We have another issue to get to before council, so.
Okay, gotcha. Just, is there a, an average size of the cities of 25? Or is it all over the map? I mean, is there like a typically a, once you?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I just know in this county, we have three. East Liverpool, Salem, and then the county.
Quickly, Jacob, of the 25 health districts that are in cities, five of them are, have a population of 50,000 or more. Those are not being affected by this. It's the, it's any city that has a population less than 50,000. And our population is 12,000. East Liverpool is 11,000. Alliance is 25,000. I think New Philadelphia is around 15,000 or 16,000. So they're targeting the city districts that are less than 50,000.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask for is a motion to send this to council?
Some move, favor?
Favor, thank you. And a second?
Second, all.
Okay, so if you are in favor, raise your hand at this time, so that I can see it in the, in the picture. I'm still looking, okay. And anyone opposed? Now, everybody put your hand down. And anyone opposed, put your hand up. And I see no hands. If you have your hand up, but I didn't see you, please say. But that looks like it passes to go to council. Okay, so now we'll go on to the second thing. And that is to tie up the ends about the Dora financing, the cups and the signs. I thought, when we talked about this before, we had talked about the fact that this would be coming out of council contingency funds along with the engineering. But I guess when the ordinance was written, it did not state that. So we need to have a resolution saying that we will do that first 25,000 cups, and then the signs for the limits out of council contingency funds. And also, in addition to that, in this ordinance, is the funds to come out of council contingency for that memorial signage for the Tibbs family. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Dickie, do we have, just for my benefit, what's that cost then total, or the added cost?
We did have that out.
The cups are no more than $4,000. The signage for the Tibbs, I believe, is somewhere under $500. And Joe, do you have the figure for the signs? Do you get a final cost on that?
And the signs will be for Dora will be under $1,000. There's 40 of them. So I would say, you know, $1,000 to $1,200. There may be more. We're going to put up 40. But when, when, when the state gets back with this, they might want us to put up four more. So rather than coming back to council for another couple hundred dollars, I would, I would tell you it's going to be around 1,200, something, somewhere in that neighborhood. So the total would be probably around $6,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Estimate.
Any other discussion? So do we have a motion to send this ordinance to council?
Some move.
Okay, who, who are we? I think we brought this number one. Okay. And second?
Favor.
Favor, thank you very much. Okay, so the same way, everybody in favor, raise your hands on council. Okay, and then put them down. And anybody opposed, raise your hand. And I see no raised hands opposed. Unless I stand corrected, that will pass. Thank you very much. And that's what we had on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole this evening. So I will see you at council in three minutes.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
All right, I show seven o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to the May 4, 2021 regular City Council meeting. It will now come to order. We'll have the invocation by Steve Faber, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all the goodness that you give to us, for the blessings. Father, we pray that you would continue to watch over and guide us and keep us safe in your, in your care. We pray, Father, for those that are sick in our community, that they would know healing. And especially, Father, we ask you to heal those who are sick with COVID, and protect the rest of us from it. Help us all, Father, to be brave and be wise and get vaccinated, so that we may eradicate this. Father, give us the kindness and the wisdom as we debate the issues. Help us to know a clear picture of what it is we need to do to serve the people that we're sent here to serve, that we would honor them, that we would honor ourselves, and that we will honor you. Thank you for hearing our prayers. Thank you for being our friend and for your love that never ends. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. And to their.
One. Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dickie?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Gano?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Jono?
Present.
Mr. Pluggie?
Here.
Mr. Zellers?
Here.
Seven members.
Everyone has their minutes. April 20 meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions? Hearing none. There are no petitions or remotions this evening. We'll move on to receiving the visitors. Onto the report of city officials, beginning with Mayor Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to tell everyone that they're invited to participate in the 15th Annual National Day of Prayer. The event this year is entitled, "Lord, Pour Out Your Love, Life, and Liberty." The event this year will be held at the Memorial Building inside. Steve, I believe that's inside the gymnasium. And it will be on May the 6th. That's this Thursday from noon to 1:00. And I can't, I will be presenting the government section of the National Day of Prayer, as I, as I have in the past. But this year, our own Dennis Pluggie will be giving the discussion for veterans. So please, if you have time in your day, it will be inside, so you don't have to worry about the weather. Please plan on attending the National Day of Prayer event, May the 6th, from noon to 1:00 at the Memorial Building. That concludes my report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the mayor?
I do have one, Mr. Baker. Have we heard anything at all from the state about the Dora?
No, the only thing we did get was a response to our application being sent in. And the fellow that answered simply said it'll take two to three weeks. I think we're in our third week at this point. So that's the only update I have. We can check again tomorrow. If you would, try and check, that'd be great.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Yeah, the mayor is correct that prayer, the prayer service will be in the gymnasium is correct. And that also will be able to hear this year, too.
Any other questions for the mayor? Hearing none. Law Director, Attorney Zellers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any formal report this evening, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the law director? Hearing none. Auditor, Mrs. Brothers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report tonight, but I'm glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the auditor?
I can't answer that.
All right, moving on to Treasurer, Attorney Apple.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Would be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions for Treasurer, Attorney Apple? Safety and Service, Mr. Capazello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank the downtown Salem Beautification Committee, Karen Carter, and her many volunteers that helped, once again, do their downtown spring cleanup on Saturday, April 24. I was out and about downtown, and there was just many, many people out there helping out. And once again, did a great job. And also commend our street department. That was done on Saturday. Our street department was out at 4:00 in the morning, Monday morning, cleaning up the streets downtown, including State Broadway, and getting cleaned up what was left over. So really want to appreciate what they did. And the street department is going around the city, sweeping throughout the last couple of weeks. They were continuing until the entire city is done. I think they've done the main thoroughfares. They kind of follow the same route that they do when they do the snow plowing. And I think the northwest quadrant, or northeast quadrant is done. So we have about a quarter of the city done, but they will continue till it's completed. And that's the end of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Capazello?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Capazello, would it be possible for you to get us an estimate on what it would cost if council considered doing a spring cleanup this year?
I will look into that.
We have had multiple requests for that. And I just kind of like to have an eyeball of what it would cost.
Check into that. I don't, I just heard, I don't know for facts, but I thought they usually charge by, you know, what they pick up by the tonnage or something of that nature. But I will make some phone calls and get back to city council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Capazello? Onto Utilities, Mr. Weingart?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of council, before you as an ordinance to allow the Salem Utilities Commission to borrow money from the Ohio EPA for the continuation of the construction project, projects at the Salem Wastewater Treatment Plant. That is my report for the city.
Any questions for Mr. Weingart? Moving on, Parks Director, Mr. Franks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Franks?
Oh, yes. Can you tell us when the pool is going to open this year?
For the June 12, I believe.
And how much is it for family and individual passes this year?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I think it's. I don't have it right in front of me right now, Cindy. If you want me to go get it real quick, I probably could.
Okay, thank you.
If I can do that. Would you like me to see if I could find it?
Maybe you could just have it for the next meeting, because there were some people who were asking.
Okay, yeah, or they can just call the Parks Office if they want information on the board.
Any other questions for Mr. Franks? Onto Counsel Clerk, Mrs. Brucker.
Thank you. I don't have anything.
Moving to the Report of Standards Committee, Finance, Mr. Noll. You'll be introducing ordinances 25 through 28 this evening.
Prior to the regular council meeting this evening, we had a fairly extensive agenda. So I'll be reading the minutes and giving a more in-depth report at the next meeting. That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Streets, alleys, and sidewalks, Mr. Faber?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee has not met. I have no report. But I will be introducing ordinance number 29 this evening.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Mary. You'll be introducing ordinance 30.
Yes, I have no other report. I will be introducing that resolution that Mr. Weingart spoke out. And I may need some direction. I understand that since that was only submitted 24 hours ago, that we may need to suspend rules. I need some help with how to do that.
No problem. Onto Traffic and Safety, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Rules and ordinances, Mrs. Dickie?
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
Parks, Mr. Pluggie?
Thank you, Mr. President. My committee has not met. I have no report.
Economic Development, Mr. Gano?
Yeah, I've got a meeting coming up a week from today, Tuesday, the 11th, 6:00 p.m. We'll be doing it in council chambers. We'll also have a Zoom option available if anybody wants to remote in. If you do show up, I will bring pizza. Make it a dinner meeting. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And Committee of the Whole, Mrs. Dickie?
Thank you. We did have a Committee of the Whole meeting just right before this meeting. And so I will have that full report at the next meeting. But we do have two resolutions that came from that. One is to cover the cost of the Dora cups and signs, and the memorial sign for Tibbs Way through the Council Contingency Fund. And the other one is a resolution to send opposing House Bill 110. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the introduction of ordinances and resolutions, beginning with ordinance 24, Mr. Noll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive council rules this evening, so ordinance 210-504-25 can be introduced.
Is there a second?
Second, favor.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickie? Yes. Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Jono?
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Council rules have now been suspended. Mr. Noll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive statutory rules this evening, so ordinance 210-504-25 can have all three readings with the emergency clause this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Zellers.
Dickie, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickie?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jono?
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mr. Noll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked that the clerk read by title only, ordinance 210- Thank you, Mr. President. I asked that the clerk read by title only, ordinance 210-504-25, for all three readings with the emergency clause this evening.
Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance 25?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to hold an auction for the sale of unused surplus equipment and/or vehicles from all city departments and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 25?
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Seven years.
Ordinance 25 has passed this evening. Onto 26, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive council rules, so ordinance 210-504-26 can be introduced.
There a second?
Second favor.
Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive statutory rules, so ordinance 210-504-26 can have all three readings with the emergency clause this evening.
I'll second, I'll second that, Dickey.
Mrs. Dickey, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked, we just waived statutory rules.
Correct.
I moved that the clerk read by title only, ordinance 210-504-26 for all three readings with the emergency clause this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 26?
Being an ordinance authorizing appropriations and transfers as set forth below and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 26 for final vote?
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Seven years.
Orange 26 has passed. Onto ordinance 27, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive council rules this evening for ordinance 210-504-27, so it can be introduced tonight.
Is there a second?
Favor, second.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Their council rule have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive statutory rules this evening, so ordinance 210-504-27 can have all three readings with the emergency clause.
Is there a second?
Favor.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved the clerk read by title only, ordinance 210-504-27 for passage this evening with the emergency clause.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 27?
Being an ordinance accepting funds from the American Rescue Plan and authorizing and establishing special revenue fund 261 here and after referred to as the American Rescue Plan Fund and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 27 for final vote?
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Seven years.
Passed. Onto resolution 28, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive council rules this evening, so ordinance 210-504-28 can be introduced.
Is there a second?
Favor.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to waive statutory rules this evening, so ordinance 20, 210-504-28 can have all three readings with the emergency clause.
Is there a second?
Second. Mary.
Mr. Mary, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked clerk read by title only, ordinance 210-504-28 for passage with the emergency clause.
Madam Clerk, will you please read? Resolution 28.
Being a resolution to adopt and approve an alternative method of apportionment of local government fund and local government revenue assistant fund monies to be distributed in 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 28 for final vote?
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Seven years.
Resolution 28 has passed. Moving on to ordinance 29, Mr. Favor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that because suspend council rules, so ordinance number 29 can be introduced this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Knoll, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mr. Favor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved statutory rules be suspended, so ordinance number 29 can be considered for all three readings tonight with the emergency clause.
Is there a second?
Yes, Dickey.
Dickey, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Your Mary?
Yes.
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mr. Favor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that the clerk read ordinance number 29 by title only with the emergency clause for passes this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 29?
In an ordinance approving the advertising for bids and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into contracts for 2021 citywide street paving project for the city of Salem and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 29?
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Ordinance 29 has passed. Resolution 30, Mr. Mary.
Mr. President, I would ask that we suspend council rules and enable us to read 210-504-30 tonight.
Is there a second?
Second, Gano.
Mr. Gano, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Your Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mr. Mary.
Mr. President, I would ask that we suspend statutory rules so that we can have all three readings of ordinance 30 tonight and pass with an emergency clause.
Is there a second?
Second favor.
Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll? Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mr. Mary.
Mr. President, I would move that the clerk read resolution 30 with emergency clause and all three readings tonight.
Madam Clerk, will you please read resolution 30?
In a resolution authorizing the Salem Utilities Commission to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Salem for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 30 for final vote?
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Resolution 30 has passed this evening. Moving to ordinance 31, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask that you have the clerk read ordinance 31 by title only for its first reading tonight.
Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 31 for its first read?
In an ordinance amending section 351.1 of chapter 351, the codified ordinances of the city of Salem.
Thank you. Onto resolution 32, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we suspend council rules so that resolution 32 can be considered tonight.
Is there a second?
Second favor.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Your Mary?
Yes.
Your Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask, I would like to make a motion that statutory rules be suspended so that ordinance 32 can be can be considered this evening for all three readings with the emergency clause.
Sorry, is there a second?
Favor.
Mr. Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Back to you, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you please ask the clerk to read resolution 32 with the emergency clause by title only for passage this evening?
Madam Clerk, would you please read resolution 32?
Being a resolution by the Council of the City of Salem, Ohio, strongly opposing any effort by the state of Ohio to abolish the local Salem City Health Department, which has proven invaluable in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the entire city and surrounding communities during a time of global pandemic and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the, call the roll on resolution 32?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll? Sorry, I didn't catch Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Seven years.
Resolution 32 has passed this evening. Onto resolution 33, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask, make a motion to suspend council rules so that ordinance, or resolution 33 can be considered this evening.
There a second?
Second. Zellers.
Mr. Zellers, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Council rules have now been suspended. Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to suspend statutory rules so that resolution 33 can be considered for all three readings with the emergency clause for passage tonight.
Is there a second?
Second favor.
Favor, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Your Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Your Pleggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zellers?
Yes.
Statutory rules have now been suspended. Mrs. Dickey.
I have a point of order here. I don't see the emergency clause on here. Am I missing it somewhere? On 33?
I don't see that there is one on there, no.
Okay, so could we back up? I would like to make a motion to add the emergency clause to resolution 33.
Can we get a second on that?
Second. Zellers.
Mr. Zellers, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the amendment?
Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Favor?
Yes.
Your Gano?
Yes.
Your Mary?[1676.24]
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Okay, now, question. Do I need to start all over again with suspending, or can we go from here?
I think because the final vote has not been taken yet, that you could just go forward with that, ask for the three readings.
Okay, so... All right, so, Mr. President, I would like to ask that the clerk read Resolution 33 by title only with the emergency clause for passage tonight.
Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution 33?
Being a resolution authorizing expenditures from the Public Service and Safety Fund as set forth below and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 33?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie?
Yes.
Seven years.
And lastly, Resolution 34, Mrs. Dickey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that the clerk read Resolution 34 in its entirety for passage this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution 34?
Being a resolution commending Sal Salvino for his dedicated service to the city of Salem as councilman at large from January 1st, 2018 to March 16th, 2021. Whereas the members of Salem City Council wish to express our appreciation and commend Sal Salvino for his dedicated service, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salem, Columbia County, Ohio, that this council does for its members and for the citizens of the city of Salem, pay tribute to Sal Salvino for his dedicated service to the city of Salem as councilman at large from January 1st, 2018 to March 16th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 34 for final vote?
Mrs. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Pluggie?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Seven years.
Thank you. That concludes the introduction of ordinances and resolutions. We'll wrap up the pleasure of council, beginning with Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to extend my congratulations to all those who are going to be graduating from college this spring summer. In particular, I'd like to congratulate my oldest daughter, Kaylee, from... degree from Walsh, and I'd like to congratulate my youngest daughter, Emily, for her undergrad at Penn State. Thank you.